All right. We're going to now call this meeting to order. If you will, we'll ask you to put your phones on vibrator and silent. I'm going to ask, uh, Wade, if you will, lead us in the prayer and leave and, uh, Chief, lead us in the pledge.
Y'all pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, as we bow before you tonight, God, I first of all want to thank you for watching over, protecting us and guiding us through life like you do, God. I just want to ask you to be with the ones who've lost loved ones, the ones that are hurting in the community, the ones that just need you, God, just reach out and meet their needs. I ask you to be with us in this meeting tonight, God, that everything that's said and done here tonight, we pleasing to you in accordance with your will, just forgive where we fail you, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to go down this list here. Any minute, Ronnie?
Uh, no, Mr. President.
All right, we're going to go to concerned citizen. Shelton, we got any?
Uh, none signed up except those for the public hearing.
Okay, well, we can hold it up to the public here. Schedule matter of business, first thing is the public hearing. Uh, entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
Mr. President, I think you have business with the election commissioner and the circuit. That's separate from this?
Uh, I think they are here for the redistricting also, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I apologize.
All right. Got a motion by, uh, Trey, is that second?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Most carried. We are now in a public hearing, uh, for redistricting and I'm going to call up for our lawyer, Tom McCorden with Butler Snow.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I want to go over two topics, uh, tonight. First of all, I want to talk about the purpose of tonight's hearing. And then secondly, I want to just outline the process of how this hearing, uh, will proceed. First of all, with regard to the purpose, the purpose of this hearing tonight is to receive public input about the redrawing of supervisor district boundaries, uh, in the county. I'll note also that we, we also noticed this hearing for, uh, justice court judge lines as well as constable lines. We haven't drawn any of those yet. Uh, we've just focused on the supervisor boundaries for the time being. The justice court judge boundaries and the constable boundaries will be drawn later. Uh, but in terms of the public hearing tonight, if anybody is here and they want to make any comment or offer any documents with regard to the justice court lines or the constable lines, they're certainly free to do so and, and those would be accepted. Uh, the public input tonight can be in the form of verbal comments or it could be in the form of written comments or any documentation that anybody might like to submit. The hearing record will remain open for one week after tonight to afford anyone an opportunity to submit written comments or documentation which they might wish to submit after tonight's hearing. Um, the hearing record will remain open until February the first, uh, to allow, uh, members of the public to do that. Now, tonight's hearing is not intended to be a question and answer session, nor is it intended to be a debate. Uh, the board, members of the board, you, you will not vote on anything tonight. Um, and there won't be any deliberations with regard to, um, any, any potential vote on any matter. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to hear from members of the public. Members of the public who are interested in the process and who are interested in, uh, the redrawing of the supervisor district boundaries. And the purpose is to receive those comments and hear from, from members of the public. Now, with regard to that process as to how it will proceed, the intent here is to proceed as closely as possible to the normal method that this board follows for public hearings. Um, when I'm finished, I will introduce to you David Wade with, um, the Central Mississippi Planning and Development District. CMPDD is the entity that's worked along with us, um, in actually drawing the lines. They are the map drawers. And, uh, David is going to go over the existing plan with you and the census data and the proposed plan, uh, that is, uh, before you. Uh, after he does that, then we will follow the normal process for conducting a public hearing. Uh, there are sign up sheets outside. Those who wish to make a public comment have signed up for, for those comments. Uh, they will enter the room. There's a separate microphone for members of the public, uh, to make their comments. Uh, there's a two-minute limit on those comments, uh, for, for the time period that will be allowed. Um, when, when members come in, if you come in and make a comment, uh, President Griffin will recognize that person and the person will state their name and address and then provide their comments. Uh, if they have any documentation, we will receive those as well and make that a part of the record. And so with that in mind, uh, I will turn things over to David Wade. David is with Central Mississippi Planning and Development District and he's going to outline for you the census data, the process and the, um, the proposed plan. David?
First, I'd like to say, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you once again on redistricting Madison County. This is the third decade I've had the privilege of working with you on redistricting plans. So it's good to be back, uh, again, working with you. Although the, uh, release date for the 2020 census was scheduled for April 1st of 21, we didn't actually receive the population counts till September. I think it was mid-September of 21. Uh, when we looked at the counts, the population of Madison County rose by 15%, which is, uh, if anything, probably lower than reality. I think it's probably higher than that, but that's the census counts we're, we're giving. Uh, you went from about 95,200 in 2010 to almost, uh, low over 109,000 in 2020. After that, uh, after we received the numbers, we came back to you, uh, with the redistricting guidelines, the same ones that were used. I know in the 2010, uh, redistricting and probably the, the one prior to that, there's standard guidelines, uh, that were adopted by this board on October 4th. And that's kind of what we look at as we draw these lines. Uh, just as a recap, the purpose of redistricting is to ensure equal representation. You, everybody's heard the one vote, one person rule. Uh, we strive to balance the population of the, the county across all five districts. Uh, the ideal population, if you divided that 109,000, you'd, uh, have an ideal population in each district of about 21,829 persons. Uh, obviously you can't get the exact same number in each district, so the Department of Justice rules do allow for what they call a top to bottom deviation. And that just means we get as close as we can to that, uh, 21,800. But they realize you're going to have a little difference. So when it's all said and done, the plan you come up with, the heaviest populated district, uh, the percent deviation over that ideal population and then your lightest populated district, the percent deviation under, the combined difference cannot, uh, meet or exceed 10%. So that's, if you hear us talk about top to bottom deviation, we're just, uh, trying to keep the districts as balanced as possible. Um, from there, we, we took your 2020 census numbers, uh, looked at by census block, overlaid on your existing, uh, benchmark plan, the existing supervisor districts. And, uh, from there, we saw that you had a 39.9% top to bottom deviation. So obviously there was, uh, a need for redrawing lines. Uh, we initiated that effort. After that, began meeting with supervisors as well as your legal counsel to look at getting input and how this would work. Uh, working with that input and directions, uh, we developed what we're calling, uh, Proposed Plan One. Uh, the top to bottom deviation for the proposed plan is 7.2%, actually it's 7.22%. Uh, this map is available on the news wire, uh, on the county website. Uh, I know we have printed copies here, but, uh, for those, uh, who may be not in attendance, they can go to the county's website and look at that. I will say, once the plan is adopted, or a plan is adopted, I should say, uh, we will work with election commissioners as well as your circuit clerk to go back and redraw precinct lines. Uh, anytime, uh, you redraw the supervisor lines, it's inevitable that you will split some precincts. That's, that's just part of the process. Uh, but like we always do, we did, uh, 10 years ago and 20 years ago, we'll come back, help you redraw those precinct lines to reduce any splits that may have occurred. Uh, Mr. President, that, uh, concludes my overview and we can now open the floor for public comment.
All right, our next, uh, public comment is, uh, Phil Buffington and Jan Collins are the first two on the list. Hey, Phil, how you doing?
How you doing, sir?
All right, all right. Since we got two names by you, you and Jan, we might just...
And George Gibbert with Makita.
Man, you just talked yourself out of two minutes, Jan. I was going to give them four, but nah. We're going to reduce it back down to two. Uh, yeah, we, we're trying to hold everybody to, to two minutes.
And, and really, I, I think, I, I was planning on just speaking for the Business League and so I don't know that we have anybody else that has any other comments. They were just here as board members of the Business League.
All right.
If that's okay. I'm, I'm not trying to wrap four, eight or 10 minutes, uh, I promise you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Um, it, it's, it's good to appear before y'all tonight. I appreciate y'all doing this and on behalf of the Business League, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for having this public hearing because in our opinion, this is one of, if not the most important issue that the Board of Supervisors will take up this year. That's not taking anything away from anything else, but we think it's that important. We also believe that the process should involve communication among all groups to ensure there's an understanding. And I think this will help do that because whenever you have lack of communication and people don't understand a process, it inevitably leads to problems. And so we, we hope that this public hearing will go along the lines of helping to, uh, keep that from happening. I would be remiss if I didn't say that over the last several years, that we believe that the Madison County Business League and the Board of Supervisors and Makita have really worked well together and, and they've helped promote Madison County and to ensure that Madison County continues to move forward because I think that's what we all want. And, and I think everybody realizes that. And we think this public hearing will go along those same lines in getting everybody to work together so we can keep moving forward and, and accomplish good things for the county. Now, the question would be is, what do businesses have to do with redistricting? And I'm just going to summarize that. It, it's our position that whenever you've got a business in the county, it's essential to be involved in the process at all levels. And relationships matter. Relationships with your elected officials, whoever they may be, the supervisors, the representatives, congressional, uh, delegation, the whole thing, that makes a difference. And so we think it's important that we have a voice when we're saying how things are going on and that's why we wanted to appear before y'all. Whenever you look to redistrict lines, that's when those relationships kind of get tweaked and moved around and, and that can give people concern. And so, um...
Timekeeper. Go ahead.
Oh, that's not time, Mr. President. I think he's getting a call. But, but that's really what we want to do is, is try to make sure that we're conveying that to you. We know it's a difficult task and we appreciate everything you're doing and we appreciate your willingness to listen to the businesses, the Business League and the citizens as we go forward. Now, I also heard earlier, and I know y'all adopted the guidances, uh, back in October, and we think those guidelines are very important to follow going forward. And obviously y'all did too because y'all adopted them. Now, the Business League has discussed redistricting, has discussed your guidance, has looked at your map, and really what we wanted to do is come before you tonight and basically say, "We agree with the guidance" and, and just raise a couple of questions. But in particular, we think it's really important that you have equal and effective representation, that you keep the communities intact with established ties of common interest and association. I think that's good for the citizens and it's good for the business community. We think keeping districts compact, which is really hard in Madison County because we've got concentration, but to the extent it can be accomplished, we think that's a real worthy goal. We think it's good to follow those national, uh, natural geographic boundaries. But the most important, and this is the one I'm going to really harp on more, is minimizing voter confusion. With everything that's going on in the country today and everything that has gone on in the past, we think it's really important to establish districts in a manner that ensures minimal necessary changes to boundaries, as y'all stated in your guidance, that are presently established and to minimize precinct splitting. Now, again, I understand, again, I heard earlier that precinct splitting is going to be addressed a, as, as, as part of the process, but as I understand it now, there are more precincts that are being split presently under the plan. And, and that's a concern to us because we believe what that does is it results in voter confusion. And, and part of that is, is because they don't know where to vote and if people end up at the wrong precincts, it slows the process down and, and all of that. So that's a real concern of ours, both from the standpoint of employees, businesses and , uh, citizens in and of themselves. So I, I, I think that's really important and, and I'm wrapping up, I promise you, Mr. President, um, is that, you know, we've come a long way together and we've done a lot of good things for the county. And I don't think anybody can argue with us about that, but we've got a lot more to do. And we don't need to let the redistricting process interfere with what's being accomplished in Madison County. That's really important. And at the end of the day, I hope I don't offend anybody with this statement, but at the end of the day, it's not really about where the individual lines are drawn and, and who it may or may not benefit. It's really about what's good for the county and I know y'all will take that into consideration and keep that as a priority because that's really what it comes down to, is let's work together and make sure we're doing what's good for the county. Uh, that's really all I have to say. Again, I want to thank y'all for letting us appear before y'all tonight. I, I would like to have one question if I could, and I can't, where did they go? Oh, there they are. Um, and I know you're not going to have this information, but, but one of the questions, uh, we as an organization had was, how you're going to deal with the split precincts? I, I know I heard that mentioned earlier and about being able to address that, to minimize what was going to be split. And, and we would like, and I don't know if you have that information available or not, but we would like to be able to get that information, just to share it with people from, from a, uh, an informational standpoint as part of that communication. Because I know the number of split, split precincts are going up with the proposal, but I know there can be some adjustments after the fact. So that's really my question is, is, is that information available and, and could we get that and, and really have opportunity to talk with, uh, your experts on that at some point, just to get a better idea of what's going on with them?
Uh, Phil, just, just to...
And I'll be quiet now, sir.
Yes, just give you the answer. Uh, this board going to handle, uh, the precinct, the split precinct as much as we can. Uh, some places we might not be able to not have that split precinct. But soon as we get this redistricting out of the way, we going to deal with that split precinct. That's why we going forward with redistricting now, so we have time before election to solve those problems, split precincts.
And, and I, I appreciate that, Mr. Griffin, and I, and I do believe that y'all will. And, but I, I guess my point that I would like to make, and, and again, I won't belabor the point is, is that when we start moving those around and we do that, it still results in confusion. And to the extent that we can avoid some of that confusion for voters, we believe that that's a good process for us to follow because what we're really talking about here is, is making voter, but voting easier and making voting better for people. And, and that, that's what we want to accomplish with this, I think.
Yeah. And, and we probably more likely going to end up adding precincts, uh, to keep from them being split. Carl and I have been through this thing probably about six times together. Some places you can't keep from having split. Uh, I don't know if Central Mississippi got anything to add to it, but we going to handle those split precincts as good as we can.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, if you'd like me to, uh, elaborate, um, as Mr. Griffin said, we will be, that's really the reason for doing this early, so we have time to work with our election commissioners and with the circuit clerk and, and get those things straightened out. Uh, unfortunately, it's inevitable when you have clean lines and the precincts follow supervisor lines and you move that line, you're gonna inevitably split a precinct or, you know, or several. Uh, we've been through this several times and we always work with the county and with Kay Little at the GIS department to make sure we get all that straightened out well ahead of time, uh, to give the circuit clerk ample time to get notices out to the voters. Uh, but yes, we'll certainly, that's part of this whole process, we'll certainly work with them.
Well, and, and again, I get back to, I, I know I've exceeded my two minutes, uh, so if y'all would just...
I'm glad you brought all those folks with you. You talking for all them.
Thank you. Um, you know, I get back to the communication because I, I think if that's communicated to the public, I think it resolves concerns and it helps people address and it helps people to reach out to y'all to, to understand what's going on because I, I think that's the key to making this done accurate and right and, and really avoid problems. Uh, and, and that's, that's really where we are with it. And, and we do appreciate your time. We appreciate y'all, uh, entertaining our, our thoughts and, um, we look forward to continue to work with you, uh, for years to come.
Thank you. Any more comments that you have before February 1st submitted into, uh, writing right?
I didn't call her either way.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all for your service. All right. Uh, any other, more concerned citizen, Shelton?
Mr. President, Renee Lambert is next on the list. Renee Lambert.
Renee Lambert? Is Renee outside? Oh, that's she is. Kind of tell us a little about you, who you represent, are you representing Renee? Are you representing the...
I'm Renee Lambert and I'm the chairman of the Madison County Republican Party. And I'm here on behalf of those of us who work the polls and, uh, those of us who also, um, are in charge of the primaries. And, um, one thing that I, I didn't know that my friend Phil Buffington was basically going to talk about what I wanted to talk about, so I will be very short.
We going to say it, it was too many, didn't it?
I will be very short. Um, I, in regard to splits, we know that the cost, it's an extra cost to our county, which ultimately, uh, is put on our citizens. And I would like to, um, also bring up the fact that some of our counties in our state have, uh, pretty much gone away with all splits because of the cost and the confusion. The only thing that I would like to say at this time, since Phil covered much of what I, which, what I was going to cover, is I'd like to know if, uh, that is a factor in your decision. Do you, um, take in account the cost of, of the split for, for the county? Not only is it confusing, but, but it is expensive. For instance, if you have four, five, six, seven, eight splits, in some of those instances, you will only have two voters for one, one area, but you will have to order 25 ballots. So if you think about doing that throughout the whole county, that's a lot of money. That's just something that I, uh, wanted to bring up that we, we run into when we do have elections.
I'm just wondering super about it, but I, I'd be looking at trying to make the voting convenient for the citizen.
Correct.
And if that scenario, you saying two voters, uh, to make it a split, we would have to look somewhere to other, see can we get those two voters somewhere else, if possible. But a lot of time, the geographic way that, that is laid or cut, we might not be... Been it for me too.
Mr. President, you only deposit when you speak, or do you want to keep it on the road?
But, but the, the cost is always a, a issue, but the convenience of the voter i- is my part.
That's, that's correct and I understand where you're coming from, but I also want to point out that in some of our precincts, that's, that is, is very confusing and you end up with very, very long lines. And, um, I just would like for that to be something that is, um, discussed and brought to your attention.
I, I think all of us hearing is hearing what you saying when we come down to that drawing of those precincts. Definitely.
And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your concern.
Thank you. Since Phil took my time, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Shelton, anyone else?
The next on the list is Robert Tyson.
Mr. Tyson has wished to remove his name from the list. He's, he's going to put his issues in writing and get with the board at a later time.
All right, thank you.
Then that's it, sir. That's it, sir. Nobody else.
All right. If that's all that comments?
Mr. President, there may be someone out here.
Electoral officials?
Yeah, there's someone here in the room that may want to speak.
And step right up there, uh...
I'll make it clear.
Circuit clerk?
Can we get your name, please?
Anita Ray, circuit clerk. I would like to reiterate on the splits because, um, exactly what, um, Phil Buffington was saying and exactly what Renee Lambert was saying, um, I do want to reiterate that because I did, I'll give you a perfect example of what has, what has happened once before. I had a candidate on a ballot and I knew that they were on the ballot because of, um, absentee voting. But when it came down to the election day, they called, the precinct called me, they had already been voting a couple of hours. And they were very, the candidate was very upset, "I'm not on the ballot." And I said, "Yes, you are on the ballot." I had the poll workers go back and check in the bags. The, that ballot, nine splits in that particular precinct and all of the ballots had not been pulled out. Ultimately, it was not an election contest for this particular voter, I mean, particular candidate, because they ultimately won an overwhelming majority. So this is what actually can happen, election contest. So please consider our splits. Please consider our splits. So, um, we are all on the ballots when it comes up and I, I just, that is, it just could be a major, major problem. The next thing I wanted to, to say is, um, it has been suggested to me by ECAM, um, when we were there last week and we had a really good meeting that I supply, and they may have this as our mapping, um, individuals, to supply out of SIMs, an address library report. Um, and like I said, they may already have this and this is a current one that we have now as they are drawing our, our future lines. Um, as you all know, that the supervisors and the election commissioners all go together as well as the, the, um, justice court and the constable lines. So I would like to offer that to them. And like I said, they may already have it, but I did want to offer it. And that's all that I have.
All right, uh, you might need to get a copy of that to write it, when you want that to go in our records.
Want it now? To take it?
When we talk, or you want to do?
Or I can provide one for you tomorrow. How about that?
Does Tommy need a copy of that?
Tommy, do you need a copy of that?
Mr. President, she can just submit it tomorrow and we'll make it part of the record. That'll be fine.
Okay. Very well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else out there, elected com...
Mr. President, after Mr. Steen's comment, uh, the deputy called and there is one additional lady who has asked to speak, Arlette in the back corner.
Come right up and tell me, tell me your name.
And I apologize, I forgot her last name.
Hey, I'm Arlette Thompson.
Hey, I'm Arlette Thompson. I live in District One, the best district.
I think Sheila was...
I have been a polling worker and I've been a polling manager, so I come from that experience. Splits are tough.
Yes.
And I'm just going to say that again and echo that. My challenge is for all of y'all in this room to come and work at a polling precinct. Until you're in the trenches and you have worked at a polling precinct, you know where we're coming from. The second thing I want to reiterate is our polling locations are hard to find in Madison County.
Yes, they are.
And with that, leads to when it rains on election day and they're having to park, and they're having to call a tow truck, because the parking is terrible at some of these polling precincts. And then finally, we have the best election commissioners in our county and in our state. They do a great job, and I'm going to echo what they do for Madison County. They don't get enough kudos, particularly on election day, when they're running all over in their precinct to make things happen. And then lastly, again, goes back to number one, the splits have got to stop. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And I think you probably will see after redistricting, a lot of precincts probably be added. She said it all, it's hard to find a location to put a precinct. So, no, churches are usually good, but a lot of times, churches don't want us, because we bring on so much traffic and tear up their parking lot, and we don't pay the $300 election by state law. Any other question from board members?
I think we can close it up here.
I think our lawyer got something else to say, then we're going to close.
All right, Mr. President, I think we are ready to close things up. I just want to thank everyone who participated this evening in the public hearing. We appreciate the comments. I want to reiterate that we will leave the hearing record open for another week until February the first. Anybody who has written comments that they wish to submit or any documentation that they wish to submit, please do so. You may direct it to Shelton Vance, our county administrator. His contact information is on the website. You can go there and get that and deliver whatever you want to deliver to him. It will be made a part of the record, which will be then made available to the board members for the board members to review before any action is taken on a plan. Thank you again, members of the public, for your participation. Mr. President, members of the board, thank you as well, and that should conclude everything this evening.
Got a motion by Carl, second by Trey to close the public hearing. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Let's make a motion that we...
Is there anything else, Shelton? Lawyer?
Not aware of anything, sir.
I have, make a motion, make a motion to...
Make a motion.
Hold on, hold on.
Until the...
We're going to do it at a regular meeting, a regular meeting. Nine o'clock, the seventh of February. Got a motion by Carl, second by Gerald. All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Great meeting, guys. Great meeting.
It was a good meeting.
Yeah.
You know...